Okay, will we entertain a motion to come out of closed session?
I'll make that motion.
Okay, motion by Mr. Bryant will have a second.
Second.
Okay, let's start the voting with Mr. Early.
Yes.
Mr. Horton.
Yes.
Mr. Bryant.
Yes.
Mr. Collins.
Yes.
Mr. Moore. And I vote yes. Come on, ask each board member to certify. Certification resolution, whereas the Carroll County Board of Supervisors convene in a closed session in this state pursuant to an affirmative recorded vote and on a motion to close the meeting in accordance with the Virginia Freedom of Information Act, wherein section two point two dash thirty seven eleven D of the Code of Virginia requires a certification by the Board of Supervisors if such closed session was conducted in conformity with Virginia law. And we convene a closed session under section two point two dash thirty seven eleven D A three and A eight. Now therefore be resolved that the Carroll County Board of Supervisors hereby certifies that to the best of each member's knowledge, only public business matters lawfully exempted from open meeting requirements under the Virginia Freedom of Information Act were heard, discussed, or considered in a closed session to which its certification applies. And only such business matters as were identified in the motion by which this closed session was convened were heard, discussed, or considered in the meeting to which its certification applies. So I ask each board member to certify. So Mr. Moore?
Yes, I so certify.
Mr. Collins?
I so certify.
Mr. Bryant?
I so certify.
Mr. Horton?
I so certify.
Mr. Early?
I so certify.
And I so certify. Okay, next on the agenda is invocation and pledge. I ask Mr. Collins if you'll lead us please.
Father, thanks for this opportunity to be here this evening to work with the business of the county. We pray that you give us wisdom and direction and guidance in all this done in Jesus' name.
Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, next on the agenda, have Mr. John Carpenter, Carroll County Agriculture, if you can come forward please. Hello, Mr. Carpenter.
Appreciate y'all.
Thank you.
First of all, I'd like to say it's a great honor. And through the years, the Board of Supervisors has been so supportive of our FFA program. Been here a few times. But I got some young people here today I want to brag about, and if they've come up behind the hearing. So I'm going to go ahead and take this off. Y'all were here when we did our conduct of meetings, and I appreciate you for that. And they had worked me into not retiring. Well, right after that, my son called me from Key West, Florida, and said, Dad, Steve's going to sell me this business. So he's buying the only cabinet business in Key West that's been in business forty years. So I agreed to go sell cabinets for my son. And so I'm retiring in January and I'm moving to Key West. Come back here about once a month because my granddaughter's still here. But anyway, I'm also going to be teaching homeschool woodworking classes in Key West. And you know, sometimes the greatest things right here in front of us that other people would love to have. But we are very fortunate to have it. So anyway, we've been practicing conduct of meetings. We did this after the contest at the end of October, and I feel very good about it. But in the meantime, Myra Lander did our paperwork again. And we were chosen as one of the best farm judges ever stepped in the nation. A second time. We won that two years ago. So we had to choose. The seven people going couldn't do it, so we had to find three more. And in five minutes, me and Ms. Carter, who's back there, came up with our three people. And so I'm going to let them introduce ourselves, and Maddie can say a little about what they do.
Hello, I'm Addison Bell. I'm the president of the Carroll County Middle School FFA chapter.
Hi, my name's Breanna Schu, and I play the role of event chair in our chapter.
Hi, my name is Colton Bass, and I'm the vice president of Carroll County Middle School FFA chapter.
In this competition, we take activities that we do throughout the year, and we put it into a script, and then we talk about it in front of the panel of judges. And that panel of judges asks us a series of questions after we present our script.
So the script is nine pages long, and they're in the process of memorizing that right now. There's eight judges and questions asked for candidates in front of a few thousand people. So anyway, these other two people up here with matching shirts on, you would think, after all these years, I've never had another first. And the concept of something has never happened before. So we took our team to the state to force me down there, which usually wants you on the boys. Well, we had the log roll, and all the boys kept running out of the course. So these two was the last ones to do it in our chapter, and they beat all the football players. So they got to go to the state. So I'm, well, they didn't want to talk. Are you sure? So they rolled this log fifteen feet. One of them jumps over, takes the cane hooks, turns it in three and then rolls it fifteen more feet. But these girls, my log was a little on the light side this time, and they're picking it up in the practices. And they're like, can we pick it up down there? We don't want to scoot. And I'm like, I'm not sure we'll be able to pick up that log. So there's twenty one other schools doing this. And they walk up, there's like one more girl team maybe out of the twenty, and they ask the judge, can we see if we can pick this up before we do this? And the judge just said, yes. And I'd have loved to seen those judges' eyes when they picked that log. So not only did they roll it fifteen, dance around with that log, picking it up. And it was a log only about sixteen inches thick. Set it back down and roll it fifteen more feet, and they did it in thirteen seconds.
Wow, amazing.
And our team placed first. And so anyway, another, we have actually won that contest three out of four years. Last year, we tied for first, and that got us on the DBJ seven place. Thirty-five kids went down there and they didn't have any crying at the cost of the hurricane. But I'm going to tell you, y'all give them a pause please. My main reason I won't take very long for being here is again to thank you for all your everyone. But also, I'm going to say about a month ago, I was over at Woodlawn and I saw it. And looked at the Woodlawn egg building. And that cornerstone that had been put there, the granite, I don't know who put it there, but the posts were all crumbling up, the chains falling down. And I went down and I talked to Ms. Harmon at Harmon's Museum, and I said, if I could get the Board of Supervisors to give me that piece of rock, which you put in your museum. That's where I was at. And then a month later, for there to be a committee established to put the new roof on that building, and being asked to be on that committee. I was in the finest class that comes to that building with Mr. Robbins. I was the president. And that's where we moved into the new building. So that's a lot of personal significance to me. But I'm here to tell you, that ain't nothing but an old building. Now, it might be like your grandfather's house or your grandmother's house. It means a lot to us. But in the big scheme of things, the fact that these girls took antique tiny hooks. And their parents are here, by the way, who are, raise your hand, a stand-up pants, who are loggers in this county. Y'all give a pause to them please. Thank you. And you know, that's the legacy. And I hate to tell you who the old building is. That is me. That is Mr. Webb, who's fixing to retire pretty soon. That is Kevin at the fair. We are the old foundation that's not going to be that much longer. But Carroll County, that fair, had twenty thousand people this year. I know you all do a great job of supporting that fair. Our school is all that we're getting back on track. You know, I got to put on three communities, and I don't know what that means. But in those three communities, what I realize, it's the one thing we're missing is the cohesiveness between all of these different things. And so I'm asking that you all perform a thing to me. And I don't know what else would formally be done to do that. I don't want to be up in the committee, but I would recommend people who would like to be on that committee, and I would like them to. I would like to speak some new position, and there's a lot to ask people to say about me. But I would call that position the agricultural resources coordination. And I speak what the dick might not like, Bill. I speak ways that will fix up really pretty state park yesterday, and the library could do that. But what do you do with it? I speak a brand of way. I speak one of these lawyers back here, who might want to place a bomb or break a broken piece. I speak somebody that are most of them. To help a farmer, it's been a point to come along. I don't know if I can do that. But you know what I tell my people? We can't all play, so it's going to work. And you know, I'm not naked on anybody. But I would let her talk again, she was so passionate. She said, why did they ever turn that building into an English building? Then somebody had more respect for being the first in the nation. And that's coming from the children. And I think there's a lot of truth to that. The fair, we can set up that once a month, and actually I make less than, and there's twenty people that can get along. And we hardly ever leave together outside of those meetings. And you all know how the fair works. If politicians were in the community, it's a county fair committee. We can't lose that. And where these phenomenal leaders come from. How many of y'all went to the fair as a seventh or eighth grader, as a third grader? They all did. That fair is where this stuff, the best thing to support it. And I think, I think it's taken the backseat. Pretty much my whole life. You know? And one of, I did have one citizen that complained about winning all this. He said, he used to be my neighbor, Larry Tomlinson. He said, I'm going to let say what you, John. I'm like, what do you mean, Larry? You all shouldn't have to be fundraisers when you win a state contest and you're going to the races. Now, we don't run fundraisers. We're pretty good at it. But I would also recommend that this committee that's formed, some people are in the ways they use it, wins a state contest. That you're stripping money there from somewhere else. That's my biggest thanks. But anyway, if any of my kids wanted to say anything, I know she would. She is actually our president this year.
Thank you. Uh, so, hi, I'm Addison Bell. Like I said, I'm the president of the Carroll County Middle School FFA chapter. I'm part of the starting, lifestyle judging, anthropology team, and the content of challenging meetings. I'm also representing our chapter administrators for the model of excellence, which is the national dimension of the Indian elders, and we had a fundraiser for that. But I just want to share with y'all a little bit of our script. It says Carroll County was the first county in the United States to teach the potential agriculture classes that were federally funded through the passing of the Smiths News Act in nineteen seventy. This act created athletic classes for boys and home economics classes for girls. In nineteen twenty eight, at a town of less than fifty miles away from our middle school, the forefounding fathers of the FFA sat down to create the future farmers of the chain. The day that thing was starting for our organization, the FFA. This one long building, it's a part of our history. Restoring this would be monumental for the county and the FFA. Thank you.
Thank you.
And you know the most exciting thing for me tonight, other than that? Is who's the young people in here tonight? I hate to say it, most of you, but pretty old to me. And all these people are the investment in our future and this county. And God bless them and Ms. Carter. I'm going to turn it all over to her in the future. She's got to work on her public speaking skills. We have made a great team, and you know, sometimes the stars line up. But one of the, some of the people looking to replace me are my past students. And these went on the tech and done their own thing, but that's pretty exciting to me. And so anyway, what is the formal thing about a committee? Do y'all do that later? Okay, well, and I would understand if, you know, there's a limit to what we can do. But I was watching Channel Seven this morning, and they was talking about a hundred and forty-four million dollars to improve the athletics at the junior team. So we can be competitive again. They were talking about buying lottery tickets for seven hundred and something million dollars or something. And then Channel Seven switched to national news, and there was a farmer in Iowa who was going bankrupt, just like his daddy did in nineteen eighty. And welled up tears in his eyes. Society is going to change, our priorities, and it could start right here. I don't care. I appreciate y'all.
Thank you, Mr. Bryant. Thank you all. Thank you, Mr. Partner. Okay, next on the agenda is a joint public hearing. I'd like to welcome the Carroll County Planning Commission. And we will open the public hearing at seven, ten, or seven twenty. Hopefully, so that's just a clock seven twenty.
I will call the order now, but they'll have to thank you.
Okay. So if I open the joint public hearing for the planning commission and the board supervisors, and I will turn it over to Ms. Leggitt.
Okay. Well, we have been working on the plan and we have the roof of speakers.
I do.
Then we will have to have the open part.
Once we hear, have the remarks, then the planning commissioner will make a recommendation to the Board of Supervisors.
Thank you.
Okay, the first one is Michael Hall.
Hello, how's everybody doing today?
Good, sir.
Uh, I'm a representative for the IBW local. It's electrical local. And we represent six counties in Virginia, and Carroll County is one of them. We want to get started, get more, more part of the community down here. We're trying to make it better for the younger generation, people that want to maybe want to change their career. And I'm here just to try to be more involved. We have, you know, we would like to have the work, we have members here now, and we like to have our members be at home with their families, eat at home with their families.
If you could address the board, then everyone can hear you and the, and the recording can hear you. So if you could use the microphone, I just asked for it.
I'm sorry, no problem, buddy. You have to excuse me, gosh. I'm not too much on getting up and talking in front of a bunch of people. But I'd just like to have the opportunity to maybe start coming and getting involved more with the community down here. Help, uh, help get, you know, when work comes here, I love for us, the people that are local, I love for us to be doing these jobs. Not people from out of town, you know, who are western people. And I would just like to get more involved, and maybe when work does come, maybe we can do stuff, get younger generations. Right now, we're in the process of going to schools, the vocational schools, talking to younger generations, and hopefully get them in a trade that has great benefits, good competitive wages. And just basically trying to get my foot in the door. We've been having these counties now for, I've been in a local for over twenty years. I've never, we, we've never had much work done in the same, which we're hoping that will change, and we would love to be a part of it. We'd love to keep the work with the local people. And that's what we have, and that's what we have to offer. And hopefully we'll get more people involved, more younger people involved, because this time is eight now, we're going with more, can meet more trades now, in my opinion. Okay, and I'm just, thank you guys for the opportunity to have me here talking and introducing myself, and I hope to be more involved. And thank you guys. That's all I have to say. I thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, sir.
Okay, next. Next is Marion T. Fox.
I really don't want to share they got him.
Okay.
I represent IBW. I've worked in it forty years. Worked, you know, given fire on it, collecting crystal. What everybody enjoys. And I worked at Phil's with us, all of this fans, priests. That's about it. I'm retired now, but I still thought I'd be involved.
Thank you so much. Next, Delilah Brady.
Good evening, gentlemen.
Evening.
I'm Delilah Brady, and I am a landowner here in Carroll County. Thank you so much for giving me the opportunity to speak. Before forming my opinion on the proposed land cap, I read both the twenty ten and the twenty twenty-four comprehensive plans. From the very beginning, they referenced Alice in Wonderland, and like Alice, I went down that rabbit hole. What I found was a huge shift in our vision. In twenty ten, the plan was about remembering yesterday, celebrating today, and inventing tomorrow. The twenty twenty-four plan, however, focused almost solely on protecting agriculture. And while I consider myself the number one fan and cheerleader in this county, I have to ask, have we stopped to think about our future generations? Have we? There's a fear of change, especially in all of us as we get older. No one's trying to take our farmland. Farmland has no infrastructure and never will, according to these plans. So if you have a cow farm or a pumpkin patch, the only people interested in your farm is the ones who want to split it up into lots and housing developments. Which brings me to solar. And both plans, goal eight, policy eight point one, is to encourage green energy. Yet now there's a proposed cap of a thousand acres total. That's for the entire county. Out of three hundred and six thousand acres in Carroll, a hundred and twelve thousand of which are in farming, with a cap of a thousand, we're limiting solar to less than one percent of all the farmland. That's not encouraging green energy, and it isn't a reasonable or a responsible policy. This is a direct infringement on landowners all over this county. This also sets a dangerous precedent. Today, it's solar energy. Tomorrow, it could be something else. What's to stop the next future board from saying, we already have enough churches, we already have enough daycares, farm stores, so no more can be built? Or we have a grocery store, so no, there can't be another one built? This isn't about solar panels, it's about property rights. This cap unfairly gives a small number of landowners the chance to lease their property for solar while blocking everybody else. That's not the Carroll County I know, which has always been a place that respects individual property rights. We already have a thorough case by case process for evaluating projects with input from neighbors, community, and the board. Let's keep it that way. Each project proposal should rise or fall on its own merit. I respectfully ask you to reject the acreage cap and continue allowing landowners to be heard, project by project, with full transparency. That's how we protect our rights, our values, and Carroll's future. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Brady.
Thank you. Okay, next, Chris Simmons.
Good evening, board and planning commission. I am Chris Simmons. I'm the development manager for St. James' University of America. I actually don't have comments prepared tonight. I just wanted to make myself available for any questions in case you have any. I know that I have been with these, they've directed, I know I've met a few of you, but not all of you. So just wanted to be here in case there were any questions about solar development in general. I've worked in a lot of different states, all over the country. And as the meeting progresses, I'll be here and I'll stay till the end in case anyone has any questions. If you have any questions at this time, I'd love to answer them. If not, I'll be right here.
Thank you. Thanks, sir.
Thank you, Debbie Brady.
Good evening, folks.
Good evening.
And thank y'all for having this meeting tonight. And I'm going to address my comments to the planning commission and to the board. Folks, I thought that I lived in America, but I am about to think that I'm in a communist country. That somebody is going to start trying to tell me, and this is not about a solar farm. And y'all have got all of this writing in your plans and stuff about how y'all are out to help the farmer. We want to keep our green space here. How many of y'all have spoken to a farmer this summer to know what kind of a turmoil we've been in? I mean, there are farmers in this county, good farmers, old farmers, that will be lucky if they can get their money back. Be lucky if they can get their money back, and the only thing that is going to pay a lot of amount is because they've got some high dollar cattle now. I look, I had three areas that wanted to do absolutely nothing, but set the doctor's office. And do you know, none of the progressive counties in our media area have had a land? Not Will, not Kewasken. The only one that I could find was Henry County, and I don't consider them a progressive county at all. But you know, the green space is really, really good, and I could get on board with you people with zoning. But I need some infrastructure outlawed or way. As the old people used to say, let's don't get our cart in front of our horse. Let's get some. Let's get some water and some sewer and some high-speed internet out there so that we can develop our land to its fullest potential. Have any of you looked at the medium age of farmers in our area? We see these young people over here that are in the FFA. And I liked really seeing that three of them were women. But I can tell you one thing, if them women right there are crazy enough to go into farming, they need to be sent to Murray and or St. Albans or someplace like that right now because they're crazy. And their parents should not be, you know, coaxing them to do this. This is a hard, brutal world we live in, hard, brutal world. And us farmers, we love the land. We love it. Y'all don't have to tell us how to manage our land. We know how to manage it. We have worked and slaved and, and then, but y'all want to help us. You want to protect us. You know, I can't find nothing anywhere that tells me how much plug gave for land at Exit Nineteen. But you know something? That my tax dollars helped pay for that. And y'all had a foreign country come in here to compete with the farmers of our county. Thank God.
Thank you, Debbie. Okay, at this time, uh, if there's no one else, will we close the public hearing? Mr. Dixon?
Okay, we'll close the public hearing at seven thirty-two. And I'll turn it back over to the Planning Commission if you want to have a discussion or recommend anything to the Board.
Yes, we've been, we have been discussing this for a while. And, um, is there a recommendation from the Planning Commission and the acreage?
I would make a motion that we raise it at least fifteen hundred acres.
Okay. Is there a second to that? Okay. All in favor, say aye. Opposed? The recommendation passes, so that is a recommendation of the Planning Commission, fifteen hundred acres.
So, if I could clarify, the Planning Commission moves to recommend adoption of the solar siting policy with a fifteen-hundred-acre, um, cap?
Yes, sir.
Is it, is it okay for me to make a comment? If it's not, tell them.
Yeah, y'all have any discussion?
Well, all I was going to say with this is, we're here, and we have all these nice people here that have things to do and, and land to take care of, and families to take care of, and, and take care of our county like we all want to do as well. So, I think there should be at least some level of conversation amongst these groups of leadership here and, and come up with something that we think makes sense and have more input from our citizens in terms of what's going on in their lives. And we have our ideas about farms. I mean, I, I didn't grow up on a farm, but I did grow up on a farm because my grandfather had a big farm out near Fancy Gap. Of course, that was two or three centuries ago. But, I just think we have to think about it a little bit further than just to say, here's a number. And, and when somebody comes to me and says, what's that number based on? I'm not sure what I'm going to tell them, other than, okay, that's what we decided on. So, I'd like to see us have further conversation. And I know that we've already taken this vote here, um, but I, I would have a lot better feeling about this. We honestly and seriously had conversations with our fellow citizens of the county. That might be able to be.
Okay, uh, excuse me, we're not going to want to speak out of order. Uh, you've had your vote in, in discussion, so it's, um, back to the Board now.
Okay.
And.
I make a motion, we table it.
Okay, have a motion that we table, do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, start voting with Mr. Early. Mr. Bryant?
No.
Mr. Horton?
Yes.
Mr. Collins?
Yes.
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
And I vote yes. Thank you, Planning Commission.
You can adjourn if you are ready to.
Okay. I will now adjourn the Planning Commission.
Thank you, Ms. Leggett. Thank you, Planning Commission, for coming.
You don't have to leave, you just.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, next on the agenda is Citizens Time. I didn't have anyone sign up for Citizens Time. So we'll go on to minutes. I'll entertain a motion to approve the minutes A and B together. A is September second, twenty twenty-five, and B is September thirtieth, twenty twenty-five, or separate.
I make a motion to approve A and B together.
Okay, have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, start voting with Mr. Ho, Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Collins?
Yes.
Mr. Bryant?
Yes.
Mr. Horton?
Yes.
Mr. Early?
Yes.
And I vote yes. Okay, next on the agenda is the consent counter that you received. I'll entertain a motion that we approve it or not approve it.
I make a motion, we approve it.
Okay, have a motion, we approve the consent counter, do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, I'll start the voting with, uh, is there any discussion? Okay, if not, I'll start the voting with Mr. Early?
Yes.
Mr. Bryant?
Yes.
Mr. Horton?
Yes.
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Collins?
Yes.
And I vote yes. Okay, next on the agenda is invoices. We have, um, A, uh, September nineteenth, twenty twenty-five, and B, October first, twenty twenty-five, that you received. Uh, entertain a motion that we approve these together or separate.
Make a motion, we approve them together, Mr. Chairman.
You have a motion to approve those, A and B together, do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Start the voting with Mr. Early?
Yes.
Mr. Bryant?
Yes.
Mr. Horton?
Yes.
Mr. Collins?
Yes.
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
And I vote yes. Okay, next on the agenda is new business. Uh, we have Woodlong Agriculture School request, excuse me, school request. And I'll ask Mr. Delilah Brady if she will come up, please. If you wouldn't mind, just give us a little history on that building, I would appreciate it, and two.
Okay, so the history of the Woodlong Ag Building. In late nineteen sixteen, uh, what do you think? How about now?
Perfect.
I talk with my hands. Um, in late nineteen sixteen, Congress was, uh, trying to decide they wanted agriculture CTE-type classes in all the public secondary, which would be high schools. And, um, so they're, they were talking of how they were going to appropriate the money. And our superintendent, school, public school superintendent at the time, Jay Lee Cox, he had heard that Carroll County was going to get left out. Um, so he hopped a train, he went to the Capitol, and he interrupted their meeting for appropriations and asked for Carroll County. Well, they were going to actually carry him out of that meeting because he was not supposed to be there. But what they didn't know, uh, the governor of Virginia happened to be at that meeting. And, um, Mr. Stewart was the governor at that time. And Jay Lee Cox had been his helper on the farm and with him when he was little. And he goes, well, wait a minute, let's, what are the requirements for the Smith Hughes Act? And the government read everything, and he looked at Jay Lee Cox and he said, boy, you go back to Carroll County tomorrow and tell him you're the first recipient of the Smith Hughes Act. And so the community of Woodlong, those people that live there, actually built that building. The money from the Smith Hughes was to pay the teacher. And it is the first in the whole United States. It is the first ag building, it is the first ag program. They wrote the curriculum that we still use today. Those kids that were speaking, they're going by the same stuff. Tools are different. Yeah, we don't use the horse anymore, things like that. We use the tractor. Those type of tools have changed, but the original curriculum is still there. How to get the most off of your land. Um, in Galax, um, the Carnation Milk Plant in Galax. I don't know if it was still there, or if it's still there. But the Carnation Plant started because of the ag program in Woodlong with dairy cattle. So, I, I wrote the letter asking for a, I guess, conditional appropriation. We have talked to several companies and businesses that are willing to, to donate, to help us out. They like the thought of this. Um, it is on the Historical Registry, and, um, we're just kind of asking if you would approve it contingent. Because, yes, we have, um, the quotes for repairing the roof. But we all know, when you start going with the roof, and that's the same roof from nineteen seventeen. When you start getting under there, are you really going to have major trouble? And the contractors have looked at it, like I said, people have looked at it, they said it's structurally sound. The inside of that building is absolutely gorgeous. Um, Carroll County folks did a good job building that building. The paint that's on it, if you drive by, the paint's peeling off, that's the original paint from nineteen seventeen. It's not a second coat. It's the original. So, do y'all have any que, uh, our goals? John and the ladies, uh, the young ladies, they touched on some of it. Our goals right now, which are fluid, could change. Um, cosmetically, it would be the roof, the paint, uh, windows. The windows, thankfully, have been made since the end of the Civil War, are still made today. It's the weighted windows with the strings on them, they're still made. So, those are the things that have to be done structurally. Um, long-term goals, we'd like to, uh, have like a museum to honor Carroll County school systems and all the hundred-plus schools that we've had in this, this area. We would like to honor the ag program, the FFA, the FHA, because they got money as well to, to have a, a place. Um, and then, as John was saying in his stuff, we would ha, like to have another area, whether it has brand-new equipment, old equipment, someplace that people could come. Like, I can't go to the schools, they're Wednesday, Thursday night, working in the shops, because I don't know how to use an equipment. But if I was there, somebody could show me how to use it, or give me some kind of. So there's a lot of different ideas that we have that we'd really like to see carry on with it. And this is a heck of a project. Question?
I just want to thank you for everything you're doing, and, um, it is, anyone that doesn't know, it is county-owned property.
It is county-owned property.
You know, it's, and it's the oldest one in the country, as you said, and I appreciate your passion, appreciate Ms. Els' passion, you know, that, about it. And, um, anyone have anything else?
I do have one.
Sure.
When, when is the, that board meeting? Once a month?
Uh, we've been meeting, just, in some weeks, it's every day at Woodlong.
Okay.
Um, and then, but now we're like about once a month, every two weeks. We meet about every two weeks.
Okay.
So, I'm just, just when we know something else is coming up.
Right. Thank y'all for taking it by the horns.
Thank you.
Is your plan, is the plan allowed it to restore those weighted windows?
Yes.
Okay.
And there are companies that they make the whole thing, but once we take all of that plywood and stuff off, we still may have stuff there. Um, Mike took off one for me one day to look, I really wanted to look. And the channels are still there. If I had to bet, they just cut the weights and it's in the wall. Uh, but that's all stuff that we will find.
Yeah.
But that's, the window part is longer. Right now, the roof is the utmost, it's got to be done.
Yeah. Thank you, Ms. Brady. Thank you. Okay, with that being said, the, uh, request that you received in your packet, entertain a motion that we approve it?
Mr. Chairman, can I ask a question?
Yes.
Um, would it be possible, I spoke to Mr. Durbin about this earlier today, to request from the EDA a repayment, uh, of funds of twenty thousand to cover this expense? Is that what, what you recommended or mentioned to me, Mr. Durbin?
It, it would be permissible for the EDA to contribute to something like that.
That would allow us to do it, and it wouldn't impact our budget?
I would rather take it from the land sale, uh, that we got from Woodlong, myself. What's everyone else's pleasure?
I'd leave it at discretion of the County Minister.
Okay.
Or the funds.
If, I could just say one thing, uh, the Board wouldn't, they wouldn't meet until third, you know, two more weeks? And then determine whether or not, uh, you know, whether or not it's approved or not would depend on whether or not you need to come to this, to this Board. I'd request you go ahead and allocate the funds, and then if that's something the EDA wants to do, then we just won't use them from the county and use them from the EDA. But if it's not appropriated or approved at this point, then you're another month away from it if the EDA says no.
Getting the roof home before the winter time?
Yeah. That's the goal.
Okay.
Mr. Dixon, I like the motion that we appropriate the funds for the Woodlong Agriculture School Request.
Okay, have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, start the voting with Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Collins?
Yes.
Mr. Bryant?
Yes.
Mr. Horton?
Yes.
Mr. Early?
Yes.
And I vote yes. Thank you, gentlemen. Uh, next on the agenda is the Holiday Resolution, twenty twenty-six. Now we entertain a motion that we adopt the Holiday Resolution.
So moved.
Okay, have a motion by Mr. Moore, do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, start the voting with Mr. Early?
Yes.
Mr. Bryant?
Yes.
Mr. Collins?
Yes.
Mr. Horton?
Yes.
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
And I vote yes. Okay, next on the agenda is the Holiday Resolution, uh, it's going to be for the additional day.
I'll make that motion.
Okay.
Prove that.
That they're giving it back.
Uh, no, I think this additional day will give them a December twenty-sixth. And the second.
I just wanted to get a rise on it, Chris.
Have a motion by Mr. Horton, do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, start the voting with Mr. Bryant?
Yes.
Mr. Horton?
Yes.
Mr. Early?
Yes.
Mr. Collins?
Yes.
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
And I vote yes. Okay, next on the agenda is a property transfer resolution for the Carroll County Wellness Center. Um, that you received in your packet. Of course, it's advertised on the website as well. Entertain a motion that we adopt this resolution.
Mr. Chairman, I make that motion.
Okay, have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
If I could, um, I, I, I think that there was a recommendation from staff, um, to adopt the resolution, but by striking the contingent upon the prepar, preparation at the expense of Wellness Center of a plat, plat of boundary line adjustment.
Okay.
I'll change my motion to that.
Mean your motion to that?
Yes.
You mean your second?
Uh, I do, would you state that again?
It would be to adopt the resolution as submitted, but striking the contingency of the Wellness Center preparing the plat of boundary line adjustment.
Okay, yeah, I'll, I'll second that.
Okay, any discussion? All right, I'll start the voting with Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Collins?
Yes.
Mr. Bryant?
Yes.
Mr. Horton?
Yes.
Mr. Early?
Yes.
And I vote yes. Okay, next on the agenda is VACO Voting Credentials. Uh, Mr. Watson, I'll let you speak on this.
Um, what this, uh, does is during the annual meeting, a representative from the county, uh, normally goes to this. And what this does is allows for, uh, one of the members to be able to be the voting delegate during the meetings. Okay? I think that this time, we only have one person, one, uh, Board member attending, and that would be Mr. Early. Uh, it'd be my recommendation, I would, to, uh, set him as the voting delegate.
Okay.
I make that motion.
Have a motion by Mr. Moore, do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, start the voting with Mr. Collins?
Yes.
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Bryant?
Yes.
Mr. Horton?
Yes.
Mr. Early?
Absolutely.
Okay, and I vote yes. Okay, next on the agenda is old business, uh, have the solar siting agreement. Okay, next on the agenda is old business, have the solar siting agreement. Entertain a motion.
Mr. Chairman, would that be as currently written?
Yes.
And the tabling by the Planning Commission does not affect that?
Oh, no, that, no, no, this is just starting agreement.
This is the, this is the Pine Branch Solar Siting Agreement.
Okay.
I make a motion, we table that as well.
Okay, have a motion that we table the siting agreement, do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, start the voting with Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Collins?
Yes.
Mr. Bryant?
Yes.
Mr. Early?
Yes.
Mr. Horton?
Yes.
And I vote yes. Do you want else to have any old business? Okay, if not, I'll move on to Board Member Comments, I'll start with Mr. Horton.
Just wanna thank the staff for everything and all the public coming out tonight to this meeting. And we got a lot of stuff going on with these land caps, and I just, I hear everything Debbie said tonight, and we need to put some thought into that. I wanna make a motion tonight, if I could, for, to make, reappoint Jody Early to the Bracita Board.
Okay. Have a motion by Mr. Horton to reappoint Mr. Early on the Bracita Board, do I have a second?
Second.
Have a second, okay, start the voting with Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Collins?
Yes.
Mr. Bryant?
Yes.
Mr. Horton?
Yes.
Mr. Early?
Upstream.
And I vote yes.
And that's all I got.
Thank you, Mr. Horton. Mr. Bryant?
Yeah, I'd like to thank all the citizens that came out tonight to speak. Glad we're getting something done on the Ag Building. And just like to thank the staff and, and all the Board, that's all I got.
Thank you. Okay, Mr. Early?
Well, ditto that, thank you to the staff, they work very hard in the shadows and make our job a lot easier. I would like to, at this time, reappoint Mr. Joe Terry to the Recreation Board, so I'll make that nomination.
Okay, have a motion to reappoint Joe Terry on the Recreation Board, do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, I'll start the voting with Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Collins?
Yes.
Mr. Bryant?
Yeah.
Mr. Horton?
Yes.
Mr. Early?
Yes.
And I vote yes.
And I'll sum it up by saying, you know, there's a lot of stuff that goes on, on the internet, social media-wise. I just caution people not to take everything at face value. There's a lot of stuff that's not accurate. So, just be aware that not everything said on Facebook is true. So, with that, I'll, again, thank the staff, and that's all I have.
Thank you, Mr. Early. Mr. Moore?
Yeah, I'll echo what everybody else has said, you know, thank Carpenter for his service to the, to the community and to the young ladies. I do have a couple of things there, mainly one, I'd like to make a motion for Mr. Watson to reach out to him and see if there's anything that the Board can do to help the group going to nationals, you know? It, it, we funded a lot of HOSA groups and different ones, and under the old ad, you know, we've tried, you know, one of the things that this Board, I felt like it took a lot of pride in, is helping our youth, you know, first and foremost. And, but tonight was the first I'd heard that they was fundraising all their money. So, you know, you don't know if, if you're not told. So, I'd like to see if Mr. Watson would reach out to them, see if there's anything this Board could do to help, and maybe my motion be to direct him to help them with some kind of donation, put him over that, so.
Okay, have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, start the voting with Mr. Early?
Yes.
Mr. Bryant?
Yes.
Mr. Horton?
Yes.
Mr. Collins?
Yes.
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
And I vote yes.
And with that, I'd just like to thank Mr. Durbin for all he does for us, and Mr. Watson and his staff and, and the Board for all y'all do, and that's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Moore, Mr. Collins?
I'd like to make a motion, Mr. Chairman, that we reappoint Christopher Smith to the Recreation Department Board.
Okay, have a motion to reappoint Christopher Smith on the Recreation Board, do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, start the voting with Mr. Early?
Yes.
Mr. Bryant?
Yes.
Mr. Horton?
Yes.
Mr. Collins?
Yes.
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
And I vote yes.
Other than that, just to say thank you, Mr. Carpenter, I think he's already gone, but just a delightful person, love it when he comes and tells us what all's going on, and, and just a very important thing that's, that's going on there. Thank everybody who came and participated. Debbie, I love your presentation, you make a good preacher. Uh, yeah. I, I love your presentation. Whether I agreed or not. You did, you did really well, but thank you, that was, that was well-presented. Thank you to everybody who came, thank you, Mike, Mr. Durbin, the Board, that's all I have.
Thank you, Ms. Collins, and I, I just wanna thank everyone for coming. You know, we have a lot with the solar farms, some people, some people want them, some people don't. That's just the way, way things are, everybody has their own opinion, and I appreciate, you know, coming to talk and, and coming to the meetings, it's, it's a lot better when we do have input from the citizens and we know what's going on. There's a lot, a lot to thank you for your work that you, you've done on the Ag Building as long, as well as the rest of the Board, Mr. Newman and everyone. I think it's a, a great thing that the oldest one in the country, and it'd be a shame if we let it fall on the ground. So, I'm anxious to see that get fixed back up for the community and for the citizens to use. And as always, Mr. Carpenter and the, and the kids that came, we appreciate them coming, and everyone else that came. And that's, other than that, just thank the staff, and that's, that's all I have. We'll go to Mr. Watson.
I don't have anything tonight, but thank you.
Mr. Durbin?
No comments this evening, Mr. Chairman?
Thank you, okay, other than that, we will entertain a motion for adjournment.
So moved.
Okay, have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Start the voting, Mr. Early?
Yes.
Mr. Bryant?
Yes.
Mr. Horton?
Yes.
Mr. Collins?
Yes.
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
And I vote yes.